For. A young lady reached out to me. And she communicated to me that she's been. She's been in uh an alcoholic for some time and she was. Uh this, these individuals came and they talked to her and they communicated to her that. You know that. They will take her to Phoenix. Uh a free uh ride to Phoenix. They will put her in a. Uh in a rehabilitative. Um environment to help her to become sober. She would have her own room. She would have clean clothes. She would have free food. She doesn't have to worry about paying for rent or. Or even her own food and she'll be warm and she'll be safe. And so she went with them. Uh in her mind, she said at that time it it sounded really good. And so um. She wanted, she's always wanted to get off the reservation, but she didn't have a job and. You know, she felt that she didn't have those opportunities. Um but it, she said it really sounded um like something that she would want. Uh to live in that environment. So she left with them. And after a certain amount of time, she. Uh she wasn't given the opportunity to tell her family where she went. And so she noticed certain things like she was limited to talking to people. Uh she was locked in her room in a dark room with very, very little light. She wasn't. They wouldn't give her shoes and she didn't have access to a lot of things. But most importantly, she said that um she was hungry all the time. And that. That's one of the things that prompted her to leave, want to leave. So somehow, I guess they have, they're not allowed to have cell phones, but. She was able to access an individual who had a cellphone and she was able to make contact with her family members. And so when they found out where she was. They came and it, they had to take extreme and excessive steps in order to keep her. Out of that environment. And so overall, um that was her uh experience. And then um a another um. An older elderly woman was taken from Gallup, New Mexico. And so she was transported down to Phoenix. And this sober living environment rehabilitative uh representatives. Also communicated a very similar story to her. And as she was. As they were transporting her down, the it takes hours to go from Phoenix to Gallup and back. She said that she started um becoming sober, the alcohol was starting to wear off. And so there was other people in the vehicle. It was like a a van that she was in. They wanted to get up, but they wouldn't allow them to get out. And so of the individuals that were in that van. While that van was still going, they were like in Holbrook. And they stopped there for restrooms and snacks. And so as those individuals were uh according to leave in their vehicle, they actually just jumped out of a vehi- moving vehicle, the two individuals. And so they couldn't. I guess their resources or energy to. Uh was too great to expend to try to get them back. They they just let them go. However, this elderly woman. She had a phone. I guess she started texting from the time that. During this whole process, by the time she ended up in Phoenix. She was able to communicate with her family. And so her family was trying to look for her in the Gallup area, and this all took place within a one day timeframe. And so they were able to um. Uh call that treatment facility. They were able to intervene on her behalf. And so then there's another individual down here in Phoenix who has have been helping. Um the in these types of situations was able to pick up the elderly woman. And provide her um some food, um provide her uh a safe place to be. Up until the ti- the time that the family was able to come from Gallup and pick up their mother. This is a mother, this is a grandmother, this is somebody that um should have been at home. And so they picked her up and they took her home. So that's a Gallup experience. This is not limited to Gallup. The same. Story uh also happened in Shiprock. So from New Mexico to Arizona, that transport happened. And then another individual from Chinli. He um this individual was reported missing back in March. And so my office was contacted. And during that process uh from March uh and as the weeks progressed. I heard from the mother, I heard from the father. And so there's plenty of. Tears, there's plenty stories of anguish and sleepless nights and food not tasting the way that. That it used to taste, you know, as a mother. Uh as parents, as many of you know, you know, when you don't hear from your child, you know, it. It worries you. You have to hear from your child, you know. You know where they're at, if they're happy, they're fed, they're warm, you know, and even when they become adults. And so I've heard a lot of that anguish from them. And so then they had these uh nonprofits that came in from other states and they were organized search parties. Around the Chinli area. And then Navajo Nation Police Department became involved. And so there was the FBI came in and they were asking questions and. This uh individual was listed in the federal uh missing persons. So I was able to to get that flyer and I shared it. So this happened May, June, July. And so. Plenty of conversations happened. In August, beginning of August, the mother called me. And right away, just listening to her, she sounded really different. And that's when she communicated to me that. That um she found her son. And. Her son apparently called her. And communicated to her that this sober living, this rehabilitation center recruit. Recruited him from a grocery store parking lot. In Chinli and transported him down to Phoenix. But he was not allowed to make phone calls. Until that phone call, when he was given that privilege, he, the first thing he did is he called his mom and his dad. And you know, not all stories ended like this. This is great. It's wonderful. That they heard from their son. But I can safely say that there are times when people are mistreated for a number of reasons in these. Rehabilitation homes, whether it's a lack of food. Or whatever the case may be. That they have escaped. And during the summer, the temperatures, we had record temperatures of a hundred and eighteen degrees. And so. Some individuals didn't make it home. And so. The parents. Had organized many search efforts in the Phoenix area because they knew. Somehow that they found out that their child. Ended up being at one of these sober or these uh rehabilitation homes or at the sober. Uh living environments, sober living homes. And so. Um they. They found out that their child ended up in. Um. In situations, their their bodies were found. And when their bodies were found, they didn't have adequate shoes. They would, they had like slippers. And then they were also found with no ID, no money, nothing. And so they died from the extreme heat. The conditions, the environmental conditions of. The environment. So the heat is, I think, what really played a factor. So that's. Um a little bit of these stories. These are only three stories I'm telling you, but. There's many stories that have come out of this and from other tribal nations. So. Who are these individuals? And so they're out there on the reservation and in this photo. This is what one of the vehicles look like. They have, they'll be in a van or they'll be in a car. There's usually two individuals. They're passing out business cards. Um I mean, it just looks like just. You know, a regular vehicle you would find on the reservation. And then on to the, on to the right side of previous to my. To my present, to my slide here is this is a flyer. And this photo here is of um. And I keep changing it, sorry. The photo is. A flyer that an individual received. And. The individual, the the recruitment, the rehabilitative homes are out there trying to recruit. For clients or patients. And this individual was able to get this flyer and communicate it to. The rehabilitation that they they can't be picking up people. So this is just um a little bit of info on what's being reported. So when a lot of these um actions were taking place. We provided instructions to get photos and to get videos. Of these individuals so that we can use it to track and for evidence also. So that's. I'm just sharing with you some of the information that has been shared with with me. So here is um. This is, at this point. Many individuals who have been exposed to this type of predatory practices have started a social media group. And this is just a snapshot of what somebody posted regarding um. Their father-in-law and their partner was taken by a rehab center. And they found them. And they were able to um. They were able to get uh their loved ones out. So in the photo in the middle, as you can see. Delegates. You may recognize. The environment that's in this photo. And this is the flea market right there in Window Rock. So this is the vehicle that's parked there. And there's an intervention that's going on. People are, they're trying to sell their rehabilitative home. Um information, yet somebody reported them and the Navajo Nation Police Officer showed up. And this is where they're talking to the two individuals. These two individuals. That the earlier were in Win- oh, they were in Pinon at the gas station in Pinon. They were trying to recruit um. An individ- two individuals that were there. And so a bystander that was going to the gas station intervened. And she's the one that. Uh there was two individuals, one person that took uh photos and. And was able to call the cops. The the other individual went and they were asking questions. What are you doing here? Who are you looking for? How may we help you? And they were there trying to recruit that that individual that was right there at the gas station. So she intervened. And so when the cops showed up, the cops told them that they can't be doing this, these individuals. Uh this rehabilitative home cannot be doing that. So they were told to leave. So they left. And so when the cop left, then these two um Navajo. Uh individuals start up following that rehabilitative home. And followed them all the way to Chinli. And in Chinli, they did the same thing and they called the cops again. The cops showed up and the rehabilitative home uh representatives were told to leave. So they left. And then so these two Navajo individuals, they kept observing them. And so then followed them to Window Rock. And this is how these photos came about. So they went to Pinia- Pinon, Chinli and to Window Rock. And. This is. I don't know if this was their last stop, but these two Navajo individuals, this is when they stopped following them. So here they're recruiting again. So. Um and this is a Facebook post that was made by the Navajo Nation Police Department. Because. Concerned individuals have been communicating to the police department, making phone calls. And then also reporting missing persons. Um and so this is a post that the Navajo Nation Police Department provided, sorry. Um. And so the most important thing is. Uh communication, education and awareness to protect our relatives. So that's what the Navajo Nation Police um provided to the community. On to the right side, this is the Arizona State Stat- the Arizona State uh statutes. On the laws that uh. That govern uh rehabilitative homes and sober living environments. And so. If a person is intoxicated. They are not supposed to just pick them up. The intoxicated person can reach out and say, I want to go to rehab. But in order to go out and recruit. Those, there's a fine line between that. However, if you. Uh look at D. The requirement is that they're supposed to notify the next of kin. The next of kin is not being notified. They're just picking up people and nobody's getting notice. And so then that's what prompts the loved ones inquiries. And then they call the police and many of, and some of these individuals, as I talked about earlier. Um they end up uh being reported to the FBI. And then they end up getting listed as a missing person. So there are very clear rules, laws. And procedures uh that they are supposed to follow. Why? Why tribal citizens? Because of the money that's involved. Under access. If an individual goes to treatment. The treatment homes are are paid between two hundred dollars to two hundred twenty-five dollars. A day if they're in residential care. And so residential care um. That that's the, about the minimum and the max. So if they're tribal citizens, then they can um. They will have access to the Indian health uh plans as a designated provider. If it, if they're classified under Indian health plans, then the rate is higher. It's higher than two twenty-five. And if you're talking about an inpatient residential home or even a sober living environment. For them to get that treatment in that type of setting, then. They get a higher rate. Excuse me. So seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. For. For a whole month, this one. Individual. According to these plans and according to what is being approved for them. Can bring in an excess of seven thousand dollars per day. If an individual is doing outpatient care. Under these plans, the minimum is three days of outpatient. However, some of these treatment homes are billing at five days a week. If it, if they're billing at five days a week for a whole month. This one individual can bring in an excess of twenty thousand dollars in one month. So then you think, why are they picking them up in New Mexico and bringing them to Arizona? Because. Of the Arizona resources. The Arizona healthcare rates are actually higher than New Mexico. Back in two thousand eighteen, there was some rules and regulations that were made. That opened up the doors for these practices. Back then, if an individual was. Going into a rehab or into a sober living environment. Then they had to get preauthorization. Through DBHS, Navajo Nation, in our case, Navajo Nation DBHS. Or even Navajo Nation REBA, the Regional Behavioral Health Services. Or even um the me- mental health care. Back then, they had to get preauthorization. But the Navajo Nation, if there's anybody on the call that knows about these services. It took the process to bring in an individual. And to do counseling and talk to them about the benefits of becoming sober. And then for them to actually uh decide that, yes, I want to do this. When they decided to do that, then these programs had to make sure that. These individuals received all of their medical care. So they had to do like their psych evaluations. They had to have all these evaluations. These doctors had to sign off. And sometimes, a majority of the time, the patients, the clients, they changed their mind. And many of them, they don't go because that lag time was so long. That they ended up going back to not wanting to go. And that's like a whole myriad of reasons for things like that to happen. So. So they pick them up and bring them down. And then they have to go, they go through, they don't go through the hospital. As many of you know, in in these bigger cities, they have like urgent care. Uh. They're not medically, they're not hospitals like IHS. They're like urgent care. You can go in there, you can get uh services provided to you. So many of these um rehabilitative homes or uh sober living environments, that's where they take their their um. Their recruits, I guess, for lack of a better word. And so. There's um an organization called My Doctor Now. If you look that up, they just kind of like pop up all over in these metropolitan areas. Where they can get all of their their medical clearances done right there on site. Now, we have received reports that sometimes there's upwards of like fifty to seventy individuals. At those sites getting these clearances. Then once they're done there, then they're either put in a, in a sober um. Uh what do they call them? Uh places where they become sober, sober environment. Um it's either seventy, twenty-four hours, seventy-two hours, or they can stay in there up to fifteen days. And then once um they're through that process, then they they make sure that they get um. Cleared with either access or they get food stamps. Because some of these individuals were saying that. I went, they took me to this home and there was no food. And so they would use those foods. Cards and they would turn it over to the managers. And so those are. That's going on out there with this. So recommendations. So prevention and intervention strategies and or filing complaints. One. What, what can we do today to? At least mitigate this situation and and to some extent slow down these. Um predatory behaviors is the one is to educate. We need to. Do an educational campaign to our communities, our tribal communities. Um even the ones down here in uh down here in the in the valley, in Albuquerque, Gallup. Um we need to educate because we know who those individuals are. Who are addicts, you know, and where they go. They go to your Bashes grocery stores and they hang out there. They go to the gas stations. They go to the trading posts. We all know where they're at. The our relatives who um have various forms of addictions. It could be alcohol. Or it could be drugs. And so we know who they are and we need to communicate to them. If somebody comes up to you and is trying to sell you this glorified vacation, do not go with them. Do not go with them. Sharing these stories is very important. And then as service providers, we have behavioral health, DBHS, we have IHS. Those individuals that work at these organizations. To. And at least empower them to say. If they see that and say, hey, what are you doing? What, why are you talking to this individual? I've never seen you around here. That's my relative. You know, and and a lot of times they they leave. Um and then also, um I know that um. The police officers are somewhat aware. But to communicate to all of the Navajo Nation Police Officers that if they see something like that. If you get a call like that, please tell them to leave. And then um that's the intervention of. Of law enforcement and resource service providers. But then just as a citizen of a tribal nation to intervene, if I were to see that. Then to go over there and ask questions. And at least try to make sure that our relative stays on the nation, then to be going with. Uh an organization that just wants them for the money aspect of it. And then last, um lastly is to. To revisit the federal and state policies to address the loopholes. Of authorization of services or preauthorization of Navajo Nation DBHS Social Service, etc., those programs. But most importantly in this also is to educate. And target employee abuse of incentives. The ethics and conflict of interest policies because. We have been receiving reports that individuals who work at DBHS. Individuals, and I'm not saying all of them, I'm I'm not saying that this is across the board. Very few individuals are the ones who are abusing. The referral process that. To the rehabilitative homes. And these individuals are pocketing money. There, it's a hundred and fifty dollars and or other benefits. It could be tickets to a con- concert. It could be lodging. It could be major sports um tickets. I mean, these are, these are some of the things that have been reported to us. That's why I'm I'm listing these. These are some of the incentives. That are being provided uh to employees in this uh setting. So. It's not. It's not those like DBHS, they have a certain process to work. it's not, it's not those like DBHS, they have a certain process to work with individuals. And then during that time, somewhere in there, they send them off for rehabilitation or to sober live. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about individuals saying, oh, so-and-so is at the Tubusitie Flea Market on a Friday. And you can find that individual there. And then these sober living communities will go over there, they will find that individual, and then they will take them. When they take them, that's when these individuals are being provided incentives. So in state statutes, that's wrong, and federal statutes, that's wrong. They're subject to federal um policies and criminally criminal activities. So that's just um information on that. And then to filing complaints is to report to property, prop- property, it's supposed to be proper authorities. Um one is to uh to Navajo Nation PD. Um the other one is to access uh with the phone numbers and the email. Also to the Arizona Attorney General. Is somebody trying to ask a question? And then the the other information that um I'm trying to um get the final number for and information is for the Oversight Board, Department of Health Services. So I think somebody's trying to to leave on a travel plane or something. Um so the other one is to the Attorney General. And then also, if they need help um filing these complaints, they can contact me at my address or at my phone number. So what we do is, we, what I'm doing is, I'm collecting statements. If there's phone numbers, if there's videos that that, you know, help to um to build a case against these individuals, then that's helpful. We, I'm I'm accepting those. And then um I can help them, we can help them file the complaint. And and no, they don't need to come to my office. We can set up a Zoom meeting, we can, I I can have I can go to a community um and so that we can set up meetings so that other policy advisors, our policy advisors can help to uh submit complaints on their behalf. So that part of it um is very important. And then we also have those individuals where um people don't want to report because they're afraid, they're intimidated. And and not because they're being threatened, but they're afraid of the shame that's involved. They're afraid of um of coming out and telling people that they have this this challenge with alcoholism or whatever the case may be. But I think overall, what's most important in all of this is that these are our people. Uh not just Navajos, but other tribal members that are out there. There's so many intermarriages that are out there that, you know, we're practically all related. But really, um the commonality in all of this is that they're preying upon our people. They're preying upon our tribal nations and taking a lot of money from these federal grants and from state grants. And then I also wanted to make note that um Shate uh Senator Sharon Pinto did also reach out to me regarding the Shiprock and the New Mexico case. And so we are gonna have a meeting and my thoughts are that we're gonna probably organize a a um some sort of intergovernmental agreement, working relationship, not just with New Mexico, but in all the states that that uh Arizona is in. And like I said, this is not just in a in Arizona issue. This includes uh California because they have native people. And what we did find out that it's very, very possible that they're taking tribal people from other nations and bringing them to Arizona. And why do we think that? Because two individuals had to be flown back to South Dakota. And they were a victim of this very same practice. And many times, we tried to find them and were not able to find them because these individuals, they drive these patients around, these clients around to the point where they don't know where they're going, they don't really know where they're at, they're just somewhere in Phoenix. And then we also found out that some of these individuals, they're enticed by alcohol. So they can pick them up in Chinley and they're given alcohol. And they keep them under the influence of alcohol all the way up to the time that they're here. So there's a whole lot more to this, but I wanted to provide this information um with the hopes that we can have a discussion on how can we maybe build an education program or let disseminate that information so that we can pro- protect our people. On my side, I uh am working with our media person at the Senate. And we're gonna be sending out a uh public service announcement to all the newspapers that are in Arizona, Navajo Times. I know that that covers um a huge uh geographic area. So with that, I'm going to end here my report. And if anyone has any questions, suggestions, or comments, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh Mr. Chair, I don't think anybody wants to interrupt you, but it's really hard, your your voice is very choppy. I'm not sure what's going on.
Taking them into the detox centers, the the treatment and counseling centers without their um what would you call sober decision? Or their individual decision to say, I want uh to submit to treatment and counseling. Whereas um and I'm surprised that the um our law enforcement people don't bring it up to our attention. It takes a senator to um bring it to our attention, but we appreciate it. Uh this referral from our work, uh we'll gather division of Behavioral and Mental Health Services as well as folks from Social Services. As they could be accessing our ninety-three, six thirty-eight funds in a roundabout way. Certainly, that would be a concern. And if we could ever um look at this and and um from the speaker's office, we will ask for a press release that we heard this alarming message. And um nice uh Ms. Angelita Benali is Dr. Jillian or Dr. Branser on the call?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I could see uh Dr. Branser.
Okay, she, Dr. Branser.
Yes, yeah, good morning, uh Chair, Vice Chair, everyone on the call, can hear me okay? Uh yes, I listened to uh part of the presentation. Um I miss uh, I'm sorry, I might say your name wrong. Toffee, Senator Toffee. So um yeah, I did request the PowerPoint, but uh this is an issue that we are aware of and also the clinical director that I have delegated over the Navajo Regional Behavioral Health Authority Program is on, Ms. Karen Johnson. So we've been working with our case management specialists um and the other staff, case assistants a- at the different uh NARBA, Navajo Regional Behavioral Health Authority sites where they're within the outpatient treatment centers for Division of Behavioral Mental Health Services. And this is uh a concern we brought up to access ourselves in the past. But it's good to hear that, you know, we can uh make more movement as there's more um uh documentation, I guess, or reports of of this happening. And with the, some of the report, I think I heard it is correct that um DBMHS with the REBA and NARBA program, we do work with um certain behavioral health residential facilities or burks um that after these members get assessed and that they are meeting criteria for a residential uh facility or a group home or whatever it is. And if that service is not found on the nation, yes, we will make a referral and work with the transportation, the non-emergent transportation, and obviously with the preauthorizations um to make sure that this person or member is getting the services that they need. Um however, with the pandemic and whatnot, we are aware that um the state of Arizona has approved a lot of um of these type of facilities. Therefore, uh we have our own um, I guess you could call it, since access is like insurance and sense, uh a preferred provider listing that we use for behavioral health residential facilities. And if we don't know those facilities and unable to visit or go really off reservation, but now we know some of the restrictions have decreased that we can hopefully again travel and 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 really figure out what's going on at some of these uh facilities. But that's what was done in the past before the pandemic is that we would uh visit as the REBA program, the facilities who would make recommendations to. And again, that would be called a preferred provider listing for us. And um really, we just want to make sure that the behavioral health facilities that we refer to that meet the needs of our clients, you know, we want to ensure that they're able to give um the the best client care to our to our Navajo members and Native American members. And as is such, the other TRBAS or Tribal Behavioral Health Authorities that have the intergovernmental agreement like we do for our NARBA program, they experience, we've uh discussed the same issue. And some of them have made their own uh tribal resolutions, I believe, to help decrease any of these um some of our staff call it, I guess, uh recruiting or body snatching or whatnot, you know, we we know we want to um protect our people. So that's really our process is we want to work with these entities, if if that's where um the treatment can best be provided. And however, we still want to work on building these facilities on Navajo, but that will take some time. Um if it's okay, I can give um Ms. Johnson, Karen Johnson, she's our delegated clinical director, a a couple uh minutes maybe to discuss how she's been addressing that with the uh case management uh specialists or the case managers. Thank you, Karen. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, um good morning, uh this is Karen Johnson. Thank you for for allowing us to speak this morning. Um I have talked to the case managers uh specialists in our group for quite some time, and this has been an ongoing issue for for probably a couple of years. Um and I also talked to uh somebody else, I think, through uh Phoenix Indian Medical Center. And they were also hearing that um some of the clients would come, that were would be picked up, but they would be obviously not not cognitive enough to understand what was happening and would be they'd been drinking and they would be picked up and in some cases were to the point of being so um inebriated that that um they were brought to the ER and almost died. And so it's very clear that this has been uh quite a problem, I think in the Gallup area, uh probably in the Window Rock area, et cetera. And so this this uh, just allowing our case management specialists to talk about what's going on and uh and just hearing what they have to say, that uh this again happens quite often. And so we're glad that that this is now finally being addressed. Um it's been a concern of ours for quite some time, but you know, kind of where do you start from? To get this uh going and for this to actually be um addressed. Um especially if you've got folks who could actually be um you know, taken against their will and and have no idea what's what's occurring and, I mean, they're you know, taken against their will and, and have no idea what's, what's occurring and, I mean, they're just multiple concerns in, in such a uh, manner of taking these, these folks, uh, from wherever they are and promising them a lot of things and and apparently also I understand too that they're also made to apply for access. They have no idea what's going on. Um, and they, they, they're made to get on a computer and apply for access so that they, I guess, people who are providing these services then get paid. Um, so i- i- in, from the start of, of actually having these clients, um, these members actually get picked up, inebriated all the way to the point where they get down to the, um, residential facility and then, you know, are made to put in their, their information, um. Kind of makes you wonder what kind of treatment they actually are getting, uh, other than a place to sleep and, and food. Um, um, to eat. So that, that, there definitely is a concern as to how some of these, um, residential facilities are, are popping up everywhere and they are just, uh, eager to get, um, staff to fill their, I'm sorry, to get, uh, members to fill their beds and this is how they're doing it. So that's the, the overall picture that I wanted to paint for those listening in today.
Thank you, um. Senator Hatari. Is there a way to get, um, Arizona Department of Health and the access to share the listing of approved, uh, um, uh, rehabilit- rehabilitive, uh, treatment, uh, centers? And then from there, then, um, I'm sure there's a a quote unquote list of violators. And those could be, um, placed on a list for site visits. And so that, uh, on our end, whether it be social services and related programs as well as, uh, the division of mental and behavioral health services to, um, I guess, uh, at some point in time, um, do monitoring visits. That would be something that I think needs to occur. And certainly, uh, uh, when, uh, your office, uh, Senator Hatari and Senator Shannon Pinto do meet, we would, uh, highly recommend our, um, Dr. Branser and Dr. Johnson to also participate in the meeting to map, perhaps map out some, um, legislative recommendations. Um, the term that, uh, Dr. Johnson used body snatching, uh, to be, um, critical, uh, aspect as well as kidnapping and, uh, taking people without their, um, uh, consent or without notification of next of kin. So, uh, that would be some thoughts as we proceed forward.
Uh, this is Karen Johnson again. I was going to say the other thing too is probably contact also the Phoenix Indian Medical Center and also contact, I mean, contact the ER and find out, um, those who have been, um, what appeared to be just dropped off. And, uh, they also have information about those being, um, picked up. And, I mean, obviously they've had more than obviously one case where someone just, uh, drives them, picks them up, drives them to the, and, and, and they realize the person is in distress, medical distress, and then they drop them off at the ER. Um, and, uh, you know, that definitely is a concern. I would a- actually also talk to them as well.
Oh, yeah, it's Shaja, I don't hear that, Nana. Um, first of all, I, I just want to be clear that what behavioral health does in their program and, uh, um, and these centers that they refer people. We have a preferred provider listing. That is not what I'm talking about. That, that's not, that this is outside of behavioral health. It, it's the people at the flea markets, at the, at the grocery store. Those are the ones, a lot of times they're not going to behavioral health. They're not accessing these tribal programs. Like this individual from Chin Lee. He, he always hung out at Bash's. Many community members knew him. But he was not receiving services at Navajo Nation Behavioral Health. He was not going to mental health or anything like that. This entity came in, took him eight thirty in the morning. That's the last time that anybody ever saw him. They took him and they brought him down to Phoenix. And so that, those are the ones that I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the people on the preferred listing. That's one. Number two is when they come down, these individuals or whatever the case may be, needs to get, um, medical clearance. They have to get evaluations and whatnot. So they used to take them to Phoenix, uh, Medical Center, the Indian Medical Center here down in Phoenix. They used to do that. A majority of the time, they don't do that anymore because the PMI, he questioned what the practices of these entities. So what those entities did is they went to these other facilities like, um, what is that, one that, like the urgent care centers? Or even, um, My Doctor Now. That's where they started taking these patients because that, those are private print, um, practices. You know, anybody could just go over there and it's not questioned. And yes, this Phoenix Medical, the Indian Medis, or the, it made the Indian Medical Center, sorry. They will question it because these are tribal people. But over here, these entities, you don't have tribal people in there. Nobody even bats an eye that there's seventy, um, brown individuals that are being brought in from Navajo and Apache and, you know, nobody questions that. They just get whatever it is that they need to get and they're on their way. So that being said, um, yes, this practice has been going on for quite a while. There's one, there's one case with another tribal member that, um, this individual, it took people from the legislators, people from, from, uh, local law enforcement had to go in there and they had to take this, this individual, this tribal member out. And it so happened that this individual was a direct relationship of a tribal leader. And that tribal leader turned around and made sure that all these entities were, all these reports, all these complaints were filed. It was complaints were filed with access with the Department of Health Services. They're the ones that, that oversee and then they provide licenses for these facilities to open up. They are the ones that do, that are the oversight for these, um, these different, um, rehabilitative homes or sober living communities. And then of course through DES, that's access. And then also through the Arizona Attorney General's Office. Those complaints were filed through those departments. And so right here today, the Attorney General from the federal government also became involved. And there's actual, a federal case against this, um, entity that took this young individual. So this is two, this happened two years ago and they're finally going through that process and it's a very long process to gather evidence and, and to be able to present a valid case. Um, in, you know, especially when it's, when we're talking about, um, a criminal action. And so it has been happening for so long, but I can say is that people are not reporting it. You report, there's in, under DES, under access, there's, there's portals that you go to report. There's portals through the Attorney General. And then, you know, for me, the only reason why I got involved is because this mother and this father contacted me. So many people started coming out and sharing this information with me. And so, and I, when people come in and submit these complaints to me, I help them and I provide those resources to them and I help them do the reporting process. And then I myself, um, in my position, I also have submitted complaints. And so what currently makes it a little challenging, uh, Shaja, um, and then also to the other, uh, committee members is that as you very well know, we are currently, um, the majority party and people who are appointed to many of these positions are, um, the Republican Parties. And so right now, you know, the new election recently, there's other things that I'm working on. As you know, the missing and murdered Indigenous people. I'm, I was appointed to the state, uh, ad hoc committee back in September. And so this is another thing that was added to the agenda and that's where I do my reporting. So part of that, this year's budget negotiation included an allocation for the, for the MMIP. So even that, it, nobody's bothering it. Nobody's touching it because the office communicated that they don't want to do anything pending the outcome of the election. Now that we have a, a, um, I don't know if, if that's still the case. Last time I checked the numbers, um, attorney, um, Mays was, um, I believe like five hundred and seventy-one ahead. But that's, that fluctuates. I mean, at one time it went down to like eighty-seven. Uh, but I'm really hoping that she's the one that we voted in. If that's the case, then I can see these situations being highlighted and being addressed. In the meantime, they're not. Even the director of DES is appointed by the current governor. So this is not the only case that I'm working on. I'm also working on the pandemic unemployment assistance, which is a whole case in itself, but, um, but this is the one that, that is very concerning. Um, but as a response to everybody here, I think that those individuals who are vested with the power and the authority to, uh, report these, the people in those positions like with behavioral health and, um, regional, um, behavioral health, the Navajo REBA programs, they also can submit complaints. If you know of a case, maybe we can all communicate and you guys can submit a report too that will add more weight. Um, and highlight these cases even more because at this point, it's the loved ones of people who ended up in this situation and me. I'm the only, I guess, quote unquote, author- authoritative, um, position that's reporting these things. I haven't received a police report. A lot of times the police just tell these individuals to leave. So what can be done so that we can get a police report to substantuate these claims? We don't have that. We have nothing really substantial to, to pa- to stand on other than photos and, uh, videos. So maybe a Navajo Nation Council resolution to say that this is the kind of predatory fraudulent practices that preys upon our people is something that we are not, um, is not something that we condone for people to come and just pick up people from flea markets. You need to work with behavioral health. You need to work with social services. And then communicate that. But Shaja, I can safely tell you that, that listing that you're talking about, there's literally thousands. I have talked to people and it takes seven thousand dollars to do all the paperwork and submit and, and to be approved for, um, to become a, a sober living home or even a residential home. People, they just get these lines of credit or a bunch of people come together and they invest and they either rent or they lease or they, um, buy property like a huge four-bedroom, two-story house uh, within a, in a, a neighborhood. They'll purchase one home, they'll purchase another home. And all of these cases, the people that are going out there are either Jamaican or they're not nor, um, nor, uh, what is it called? Jamaican and there's another ethnic group, but it really talks to, it really brings up those issues of, of people not understanding exactly what they're being told. They just hear Phoenix, free, food, room. Those are the things that they hear and, and it's just like a glorified vacation. And so, you know, we talk about, you know, this is what we can do on Navajo. This is what we want to do on Navajo, but we have NHA compounds in those policies. It talks about, um, it talks about, um, essential services. That's how some of these police officers, they move into a community. And they're there because it's part of a safety concern, but there's a lot, there's a lot and, um, but that's just all I wanted to respond. I mean, you can get a license to operate one of these things practically overnight and there's literally thousands of them. But most importantly, it will really elevate the dire, uh, situation if people were reporting these fraudulent practices.
Okay, Sheila, um, he has a Senator Hatari. Again, um, we basically would have to also, um, get the same presentation to Law and Order Committee and most especially the, or Attorney General, um, or Department of Justice. Um, we will, on our end, we'll get the ball rolling through, uh, Office of Legislative Counsel. Get on the call with, uh, Chief Legislative Counsel and Ms., uh, Loya Henderson and, um, Attorney General, Assistant Attorney General to, um, map out a strategy. But what, what we're dealing with, what you're presenting with is those aspects of Arizona statutes. And they're credentialing of these, uh, rehabilitative services. And I, and how do we then effect, uh, the changes? On our end, um, I think we have the monitoring system in place. However, there's, uh, within, um, the non-emergency, um, transport system. Division of Health has worked out, uh, Division of Health has worked out uh. A system to where the off reservation um. Entities also uh, uh, report and uh, there is that monitoring aspect. And perhaps uh. That's the avenue to um start going to in this uh. Rehabilitative uh treatment, um detox centers that uh you've brought issue to. And if you could, I guess, uh, share the list that you have of these um. Suspect entities. And we could then give it to our Attorney General and she can uh. Make contact with the Arizona Attorney General. That would be another avenue. And so, that's, that's where, otherwise, we're just gonna keep talking. We'll make a, a pile of notes and a pile of recommendations and we won't uh. Get a thing, get anything rolling, so that would be my recommendation, if you could. Send me the suspect. Entity list, then I can, from the Chair's position, we could convene um the appropriate. Um. Authorities and if it comes from the nation, we could always go to um. The FBI on, on this particular matter. That would be my recommendation. Committee members, do you have any questions? To add to the discussion, Honorable Paul Begay.
Uh, thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Mr. Leader. Members of Health, Education and Human Services. And uh staff, all the people are listening. Thank you for the report. Uh, it's, it's very disturbing. Uh, I understand. It, it has been said that this has been ongoing for a while and it kind of. Stunning that nothing has been done so far. This is uh. The lent kidnapping. And then, most of the time, probably against their own will. And then they're taken off the reservation. Where people are m- gaining. Illegal mon- uh making illegal monetary gains. At least, oh, what? We heard you tell the story of. These people looking out for people to pick up from. Police came. Told them they can't do this stuff around here and they let, they were let go, went to Chinlea, same thing, they were let go. Went to Winter Rock, let go. How does that work? If it's been going on for a while, you would think there's some kind of inner. Uh, inner, inner, inner. People working together, police at the tribal level, with the county, with the state. Uh, the police and the legal system and valley, in the valley are not working with each other. Or, or with us or anything like that. It seems to me that people that work in these areas, rehabilitation services. Should be carrying some kind of credentials in identifying that they are legally operating. And so when a law enforcement stops them, they, they would check to see if they are legally operating. We're so concerned about missing and murdered indigenous people and relatives. But it seems like this one is kind of in the back, I, I don't want to say this, but it kind of feels like this is in the back burner. Not bringing an attention to, to, to it. And I agree that some kind of a, uh, publicizing should happen. Education that such a scene is going on, radio. I did see a couple, a few times on social media, uh, this, this incident happened. But radio, newspaper, even at the chapter level, the same way this COVID nineteen education was done. About the dangers of COVID. And to this day, even though the numbers sometimes go down, we still are. Uh, thinking that it's safe to wear our mask and keep our six, six feet distance apart and wash our hands. We're very well edu- educated because education happens, even at a chapter level. We need to educate our community, our people with this also. Ah, me, I, I see, it, it's, it's now, it seems to me since summer, this summer. It's happening more, more frequently and, 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 and reports come in more frequently. But, oh, uh, I even heard. The notion that, you know, bring the numbers down on this. How about bringing all the num- all the numbers down? Oh, man, these are people that are unable, unable to protect themselves. They are victims of human abuse. Uh, then they appear on social media, has anybody seen my, my dad, my grandpa, my brother? And we need to work together with the state, law enforcement, county and the Navajo Nation. Think part of the thing is that whenever they're stopped and there's suspicious activity. Uh, that this might be going on, those people need to show official and legal documentation. That they are working legally. And I think uh Chair requesting these rehabilitation centers will help. They can. Look up on that list to see if those are, if, if these people are legally uh. Accepted to operate in the state of Arizona. I agree that, you know, just the outlining towns like Gala, Flagstaff, Page. Farmington, those are prime spots for kidnapping these people. Fashion. It, uh, it, it's a bit heartbreaking just to hear this, this report. Uh, it's heartbreaking that we're not making, I'm sure that we're making some effort, but it, it. You know, we should be tackling it the same way like the dangers of COVID. These are human lives that we're, are, we are talking about. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Sir Che, Honorable, uh. Begay, committee members, uh, before we go any further, uh, let me. Um, request a motion to adopt the report and then to offer recommendations. Motion. By Honorable Paul Begay, I hear a second. Second by Honorable Purnell Halona. Any follow-up comments, um. Recommendations or questions to the presenters and all the folks that are, that have spoken to the issue? Honorable Purnell Halona, you have the floor.
First Jeff, uh, first of all, I want to apologize for my language. Getting accidentally a customer. I just want to apologize for anybody on that. Um, but uh, um, according to the situation at, at hand. I gotta understand that now, a lot of the individuals that have been. Up some of that. Attention this past week. About how to get around it, but I do, I do have a card somewhere in New York. Cause I, I went over there and talked to him and find out what kind of program he had that he was setting up with. Individuals out to uh. First, it is, I talked to him, it was. Friend with a, a church that he had. Right, they're not uh. I, I would think the legal uh, uh, uh. That's probably keeping that, that funding down there. There is no contact uh with the individual, cause you know generally we can go to rehab. Having a contact with your. I believe you contacted anybody else. Working back from some of the. At the program and came back to Gala. I'd say that word that uh. Down here for rehab and I did. If they said it was a thing. Uh, maybe going on there or, or individuals that have some gain, stuff like you were saying. Just some of that, uh, um. Probably in the uh. Situation right, it seems uh, media extension. Uh, right now, there, there are any people there south. Some of the uh, uh. Having alcohol trouble, drug trouble, falling into. Going, going around right now, uh. When you tell me that that program is. Talking to anything and, and so. Getting out that, uh, notice for uh, it's being. On individual. Issues, something we have. Some documents. I put. I had talked, you didn't have any of that. I had questions about why we had to take the state, we had to take the individual. Anything that they say is that it's a voluntary thing. What they would want to come down and talk to, uh. There's some habits or, or drugs. Off to them, they come down there. Some of the people uh have been listening back in those years and they're doing a lot of that, uh, uh. Like they're trying to do a lot of it, but there's. Need to be, like she, as she said, a social service. So we can do it, not just. But education for the people is, is one of the biggest things that happened. Done around now, could I know? About this. That's, that's just one, uh, thing, I think you have to. Of course, uh, the uh K T man. That's all I have to say about that right now, and uh, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Honorable Halona. Committee members, any other comments or questions? And again, uh, from the committee, we'll uh. Put this item on our, maintain it on our agenda. As we uh go forward to develop a strategy on how to best proceed. And again, part of uh this whole aspect is. How do we get access to these um. Fly-by-night, if that's the proper word. Um, entities so that we can target um. Attorney General's uh investigation or a request for investigating um. Those um practices in the state of Arizona. And who knows, it might even be occurring in New Mexico and Utah and Colorado. We'll have to. See how that can proceed. And as far as uh. Well, let me leave it at that. Committee members, uh, with the motion and the second, would you agree with those recommendations? Oh, Chrisila, with that, there's no other co- uh, comment, we'll make, make those uh recommendations. And in our uh vote to accept the report. Out of Senator. Yeah, just thank you for addressing this matter and is a red flag. We will um proceed as best as we can.
Oh, yeah, she's yeah, although he had. Um, I'm very thankful and I appreciate the time and. It's always an honor and a privilege to, to come before all of you. I'm just looking at this dark screen and, and I don't, and I don't, I can't see you. But um, I do appreciate this time and your attention and then also going forward with a plan. Um, with these complaints that have been submitted so far. In the state statutes, what I had showed to you and I did email the PowerPoint presentation to you. As well as Shiaj um delegates later. In there, under the Arizona State Statutes, under D, it says that. Um, that next of kin has to be notified. However, if the patient is not incapacitated by alcohol. That patient can opt to not notify anybody. But all of these individuals are being taken in under the influence of drugs or alcohol. So, it's by law, they have to notify next of kin. And so, um, last week on Thursday, one of these group home, um. Managers, they brought together all of their case man. Managers, they brought together all of their case managers and instructed the case managers that they need to go and, and meet with these clients and start getting authorization forms. So they had a very small timeline to get these clients, um, to sign these authorization forms. And there's more than 700 authorization forms that had to be signed. So I think the investigation going forward needs to be very strategic in making sure that, uh, cause people are listening. People have already been involved in our meetings who are listening and then they're reporting back. Because like I said, people are getting paid a hundred and fifty dollars. And so we have to be strategic moving forward so that, you know, they're not covering their tracks. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you very much and I wish everyone a wonderful, beautiful day. And you all know how to get ahold of me, so, um, I'm available when, when you need me to report or to meet on this. But I'll be giving, uh, Shada, Senator Pinto, um, it all later on today to talk about, uh, how we're going to address these issues. And we'll report back too. Thank you very much, hi ha.
So. So we'll, uh, do the roll call vote to accept the report and offer recommendations.
Yes, Chairman So, roll call vote on accepting the report with the recommendations. Honorable Paul Begay, do you know how to vote?
Honorable Paul Begay votes green.
Thank you, Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Paul Purnell Halona, how do you vote?
Honorable Green.
Thank you, Honorable Purnell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison Walika, how do you vote? Honorable Edison Walika, thank you, Honorable Edison Walika votes green. Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Chairman, we have four members voting in the affirmative, zero opposing, chairman not voting, and one member not voting. Chairman?
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that vote, forward, favor, zero opposed. You're not voting. That brings us to, um, item. Five B. The Saint Michael's Association for Special Education. Do we have? Ms. Sarah Hubbell and Ms. Rita Hubbell on the call.
Rita Hubbell is on the call.
Star six, Ms. Hubbell.
Ms. Hubbell, can you, is star six?
She's on the call.
I can't get on. Hello?
Can hear you.
Thanks. Hello, can you hear me? So should I go ahead and continue? Okay, I'll go ahead and continue my presentation. Um, Mr. Honorable Carl Slater was the representative and being, uh, representing our proposal on behalf of Saint Michael's or SMAS, I'm gonna say from here forward, is, um, SMAS was, um, SMAS is experiencing an extreme difficulty in its financial status right now due to the temporary closure of the Education Department, which is a program that, um, was offering us 1.3 million dollars for negotiations and contracts with the public schools within Arizona and B I E schools in New Mexico and Reima, the, the New Mexico area, which was, uh, Reima and, um, Fort Wingate. And so. We have, um, temporarily closed the, the schools as of July 18th, 1922. And, uh, the former education director has left to go back to the public schools in order to retain her retirement benefits. And due to COVID, we've been unable to solicit and recruit for special education teachers who are certified in the state of Arizona. Also, as a result of COVID, we're not able to seek the volunteer programs with Mercy Corps volunteers who have given us, um, teachers and/or other occupational, specialized occupational staff that can help, like in physical therapy, occupational therapy, um, speech pathologists and those areas. And so, right now, we have, um, the group homes, which is servicing the, um, special needs, handicapped and wheelchair and autistic individuals. And we also have, they live here on campus and we provide all of the home environment, meals, cleans, um, everything for their daily home, home living. And in the daytime, they go down to the daytime program services and they do, um, enhancing their knowledges in reading, writing, and physical ther- uh, my physical activities and other things that are required by their personal service care. Um, we also have about nine individuals that come from home, uh, that come to the D T A program, uh, for the day from eight to three o'clock, uh, or two o'clock, I'm sorry. And so. With that, we've cut back, um, quite a number of our members. And some of the parents have not, have chosen not to let, allow their students back into the school because of COVID. And so we haven't been able to, to retain or bring back a few of the students. We have one student from Lookat Chica that goes to Gennado's High School and lives on campus. And we're, we're contracted with the Navajo Nation Social, Division of Social Services, Family Services. And so they offer us room and board and hab, but not transportation. And so, in order to do transportation, we found out in the meeting last week, we have to modify that contract. And so that will probably be a five to six month process because of the changeover in the elections and, um, the 164 process. So, um, we're at that point. One of the reasons why the Transportation Department was actually a real, uh, component of the organization was because of the school. And this, the, right now, to transport those, um, home D T A program members, that's, some of the reimbursement is allowed, but not all of it. And therefore, we're having, um, personnel problems in terms of, um, recruiting for those specific areas. But if you'll, and I'm trying to give you this history because eventually at some point in time, if we don't get the education component back, uh, um, back in operation, then SMAS will eventually probably have to close. And, um, because our, right now, we're just currently, um, re- getting our reimbursements just in time to meet payroll. And then we do reimbursement, we meet payroll. We're not actually meeting the operating expenses of the organization. Some of that is handled through the, um, D M F program, which is a program that we handle all of our donations from people that are connected with SMAS and they donate to the organization. Um, we do have people who will their, their monies to us and we do have one that's pending a high amount, maybe between 50 to a hundred thousand dollars, for which we've been trying to get for almost a whole year, but unable to because of the red tape of getting that money. In December, because of the renewal of social services, um, we will not be getting refunded because, um, the monies have to be approved by B I A to the Navajo Nation and then they'll put our, all of our invoices on hold until probably March or April of next year for the social services to reimburse us. Um, I'm kinda laying the groundwork for you so that, um, in our proposal, we've, uh, Mr. Key, who was our former executive director, developed this proposal for, um, buildings and, and reading the bill, the, the proposal myself. Because I became interim director on October 31st. I read this proposal over the weekend and, and he's alluding to the fact that we need to, we're asking for, um, monies to upgrade our buildings and to get our kitchen back in operation because the kitchen also closed because it's connected with the contracts with the public schools. And so we had to lay off staff, we've, we've reduced in all areas that we can think of to maintain our costs at a lower, a lower amount. Meaning that we're not rehiring in any of our positions. The only hiring we're doing is in our direct care so that we can have services provided to our members. And in that department, they have so much overtime that it's affecting our general fund because we don't get reimbursed for overtime. And if you'll see in our proposal, they've had descriptions of, um. Redoing the cafeteria, the solar classroom, and then asking for funding for personnel. Um, again, I'm, I'm, this is the first time I've reviewed this proposal, so, um, that's what he's asked for. And so I guess, um, we're asking for consideration for health and education to make a recommendation to. Now, but yet get to consider this proposal and then eventually have it go to the Navajo Tribal Council. And so, um, we have written to the Navajo Times to notify the public about, um, the situation that we're in and in seeking potential donations that can help to continue the operations. Um, but again, I, like I said, we just are trying to do the best we can to continue the operations for the members. And so I guess, Mr. Slater, do you have anything to add to that? Um. We, we know that the education component is gonna take a lot of work because we now have to start going back to the state of Arizona, Department of Education to reestablish ourselves. We also have to go to the school districts to try and negotiate the south, um, the contracts again to render services. And if that doesn't come through, we're gonna have to increase our membership in the group homes so that we can increase serving the population. But the way it stands financially, um, it just seems like we're, we've gotten ourselves into a standstill in that area. And so we're resorting to, to the Tribal Council or to any other source of funding. The other area that really affects our funding, I know there's recommendation, I know there's grants and there's, um, all kinds of, uh, monies available to help special needs. However. SMAS has not done, we just barely completed the audit for 2015. We have not, um, we have not done 2016 through present. And we've been trying to work with Navajo Housing Authority and our auditor, which is Whitley, and trying to move forward on this. And they are gonna start up on December 26th and we're hoping to have this audit portion for the four years that they contracted for, which was 15, 16, 17, and 18. And right now, our attorney's reviewing that to see what alternatives we have in that regard. Um, 19, 20, 21, 22 have to be, um, subject to requests for proposals and/or, um, I know the business regulatory offers, um, waivers. And so I'm, um, that's the extent of my report to you and, and ask you maybe for your recommendations, your support in whatever you can provide for the special needs. And I can speak on behalf of the members, but this, it, to some of them, this is the only place they know. And some of them. Have no place to go if we close. And then this, the, um, Division of Social Services would probably have to work with them to move them to a state facility. And, um, then we would discontinue the daytime program and we would have to lay off about 40 to 45 staff people. That concludes my, my report to you, um, in asking you to, to support the proposal for, that's on the table that was submitted by Mr. Key.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbell. Well. Right off the bat, you need to get all the audits up to date. Think it's a prerequisite to even qualify for funding.
You are correct in that regard and I'm having a meeting with, we had a meeting with N H A and they did talk to our auditors because Ms. Curly is, uh, knows the individual personally, so therefore they've moved, they originally were not started to start on 216 until sometime in January, but they moved it up to, to December, which doesn't really help much, but it's like the last week of December. But I'm gonna be talking to the auditor this afternoon at 2 P M. And we, that was, has been the message that has been conveyed to the executive director since, uh, last year.
Even then, if the audit, audit report shows some. Exceptions that would also. Possibly put roadblocks. To further funding, so. Seems it. And it'd be hard for the committee to even. Number one, your application for endorsement would have to really, it'd depend on the audit funding.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm, I'm making this report, basically, I, my position with SMAS has been the H R manager. And, um, there's been a changeover of our organization since August of 21, where our previous executive director's, uh, contract ended that year. And I've been acting from August to December of that, or to October for three months. And then our new executive director came in, in November and then left. The end of last month. And so I'm kinda holding the flame and trying to understand the whole processes and the importance and trying to move things forward. And, um, if you, if you deny supporting us, then I can understand that. Um, and I do, we have put the audits as priority and, um, I told the staff. and um, I told the staff that that's one of the things that we need to move forward on and I've told the auditors that we would like to have this finished by, by March, um, if possible. And eventually, we're gonna be losing our accounting manager, who's a, a very integral part of the audit. And we've had to hire a consultant just to help her because our business and operations director resigned in June of two thousand twenty-one. So we're her and I are learning as we're going along all the ropes that um, you guys know. And I guess we're looking up to our leaders to see if we can do it properly and so I'm just kinda picking up the pieces.
Uh, Ms. Hubbell, please uh, understand uh, I'm just laying out what would be required.
Yes, sir.
And the committee is not denying any support. Anything. The initial thoughts would be to uh, convene a a group to help you with the organization. Foremost, uh, uh, yes, uh, Paula Sinés comes to mind to help you. In fact, she was one of the ones that first brought this issue to our attention. And uh, the other, the executive director um, was on board. But we'll, we'll look at well, that's uh, we'll enter a conversation with Sinés to see who else could help. Um, but yeah, for any, any simple funding, even nonprofit entities, they would want give you funding, they would want your organization to be um, have proper protocols for the accounting um, processes in place. That is uh, and Chair's position, I'm just giving you some red flags that would possibly delay getting funded, even on an emergency basis. That would be um, thoughts, committee members. Chair seeks a motion to adopt the report. Motion by Honorable Edison Wanika. I hear a second. Second by Honorable Purnell Halona. Um, committee members, any comments, questions, or? There being none, then, uh, Ms. uh, Hubbell, the last audit that you say was completed, could you uh, forward it to our legislative staff, Ms. Angelita Benali?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you for listening.
And then also, uh, give us your the listing of the board of directors and organizational charts as well as the personnel that you still have, the number of students that you are serving, um, and then right now, the, the current source of funding. Um, that would be uh, one that uh, we know you're right now a nonprofit operating this um, bigler um, facility and services and I guess the main basis is that um, committee seeks uh, your status as in good standing for a nonprofit.
You wanna co- you wanna copy of the in-good standings?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I can do that. So you're asking for a, a copy of a listing of the students we're serving, the numbers of staff employed, their current source of-
Yes, Ms. Hubbell, not the listing of students.
Numbers, numbers. Yeah. I'm sorry, number of staff, number of students, current source of funding, our copy of their good standings and the audit.
Yes.
Okay. Got it. I'll take care of that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions, comments, statements? With that, could we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Chairman So, roll call vote on accepting the report. Honorable Paul Begay, how do you vote? Honorable Paul Begay, how do you vote? Honorable Purnell Halona, how do you vote? Thank you, Honorable Purnell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison Wanika, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Edison Wanika votes green. Honorable Paul Begay, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Chairman, we have three members voting and the firm members are opposing, chairman not voting, and two members not voting. Chairman?
Thank you um, for the roll call vote and thank you for announcing the vote. Uh, with that, we go to item five C, uh, Department of Ed- Education, Ms. Angelita Benali.
Chair. According to your amended agenda, we have five C, which is from, um, a report by the um, Navajo Nation Department of Ed- Education. It's regarding a draft policy for school board background check, incorporating background check requirements from the Bureau of Indian Education, Navajo Nation Department, uh, of Personnel Management, Navajo Nation Public Safety, Navajo Nation Department of um, Ed- Education. Presenters are, uh, Mr. Matthews So, Legislative Analyst with D O T, and Ms. Levita Majestas, Senior Education Specialist with D O T. And Mr. Chair? Chair Matthews So, are you on the line, and Levita Majestas?
Uh, yes, yes, I am, uh, member of the committee and I'm also here with Olivia Nelson from O D A. She is also the program manager.
Mr. Matthews So, you have the teleconference floor.
Sure, uh, thank you. Good, good afternoon to everyone. I know it's been a long day, so I'll, I'll jump right in. So the, this uh, proposed policy has come up from many of the different, um, I, I believe a, a copy was, was sent to Ms. Benali, who probably should be able to send out copies to the, the committee and, and other members. Uh, but basically, this policy is gonna, is targeted or, or focused on two, two uh, two types of school boards. One is for the tribal controlled schools, which includes a, the contract school. And it's also designed to incorporate elements wi- with the bureau operated schools. Um, so ba- basically, in a nutshell, it's trying to create a comprehensive policy that would um, put both groups of category, bo- both groups of school boards or school members under this, this type of policy and allow the, them to be able to conduct business and, and move forward. And, and I believe one of the big goals behind this is we wanna try to ensure that a lot of these background checks are performed in a timely manner, at least on before the, the swearing in office, which is gonna become in, in June. Um, so, so I'm, I'm here with O D A. We did talk about it. We did um, put, put together some major pieces that we're hoping to have, but basically, it's, it's a simple two pager. Uh, basically, that it requires that all, all local school members shall be subjected to and required to provide a Navajo Nation state and federal criminal history check and or background investigation investigation to the Department of Ed- Education. Such investigation shall be performed before or upon taking the oath of office and at other times that may, may appropriate. It also reiterates some of the policy that's currently in place for the, from the contract grant conversion handbook, that no persons convicted of any trial-related crimes may serve on a school board. It also reiterates some of our authority as a department, that the department is specifically charged with ensuring that, that all Navajo Nation schools comply with uh, this, this policy as well as applicable laws and, and jurisdiction. It also creates, uh, with said for the requirement that the department shall be able to maintain files containing the results of any background checks or investigations and the files will retain for notice of years. Uh, it also puts in place another provision that local school members who do not pass the background check um, shall not be allowed to conduct or participate in board meetings, work sessions, travel, receive stipends, or allowed to come on campus or participate in school-related activities un- until the, the background check is done. Uh, in paragraph three, this came up as far as a cost. Uh, basically, the, the cost is gonna be at the expense of the local school member or, or the, or the school who probably will pick up the cost. And, and one of the goals behind this is also to e- establish the Department of Ed- Education as almost a clearinghouse similar to the Office of E- Ethics and Rules that provides notices and clearance to all appropriate agencies, to one, to the schools, two, to the school member, three, uh, three, to the election office, and of course, to us at the Department of Ed- Education. Uh, basically, the, the one of the, this, in paragraph B, it's that the department shall maintain accurate updated records of all local school members. Uh, the department shall provide clearance notices to respective agencies and organizations to ensure that the school member has complied or in some cases, not complied at all, applicable Navajo Nation applicable and fe- federalized policies. So basically, the, the reports would come in, uh, the, it would come into a designated office within the department. They would review it a- and then send the reports of whether or not the, the school member has complied with what those requirements are. Uh, in paragraph three C, we also built another, another um, clause based on past relationships a- against retaliation. So here, we want to ensure that, uh, local school boards or individual, individual board members cannot retaliate or take adverse action against employees who are, who are doing their jobs to ensure compliance with the background check policy. Uh, we also put in, put in a provision that employees who have been adversely ef- affected by ensuring compliance are entitled to damages, reinstatement, back pay, and or attorney's fees. And, and paragraph G, we've built in a provision for uh, um, compliance enforcement as well as sanctions. Uh, basic, basic stating that all provisions of the, of the background check policy shall be investigated and enforced by the Dep- Department of Ed- Education. So the first is um, is a local school members who, who fail to submit or submit to or pass the, the background check are not allowed to conduct any business whatsoever, travel, receive stipend, um, participate in school activities until the background check one is turned in. And then two, it, it also needs some of these other requirements. And then in paragraph two, this is the, the, the next step, as a repeated non-compliance that there is with this provision, shall provide immediate justification for the Department of Ed- Education to sta- to, to take steps necessary to remove the causes for non-compliance, which includes but is not limited to immediate assumption of the, of the non-compliance school pursued to Navajo Nation law. And, and there are provisions that build in the due process part in, in this regard. Uh, and this is the last step, and this is with the committee's authority, that non-compliance, if, if there's further non-compliance, uh, then that, that school's reauthorization or authorization agreement may be revoked or canceled. And, and that's the more extreme step. So here, we're trying to build in, I guess we'll call it progressive, uh, progressive steps with regard to compliance. And then in paragraph V, we're also specifying what the current background check requirements are. Cause I believe there's been a lot of confusion uh, with, 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 with regard to what those background checks are. So basically, uh, school member background checks shall comply with all provi- provisions of the, uh, Navajo Nation law. Uh, and I believe some of those are specified or spelled out. And then the background check is gonna be based on school members' fingerprints and or other identified information. And that, those fingerprints can be either a manual fingerprint and or a live scan that's performed at a local school or per, service provider. A- and the, the other part is that the background check also is channeled through the FBI, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, and also requiring a distinct criminal history repository check of all states that a school member lists as former or current residences. And lastly, it's a background checks that are performed through IMS, uh, Division of Public Safety. And, and this is the other part that we wanna ultimately clear, is that the background check commences with the person's eighteenth birthday. And we also wanna put in there, that the last provision is that background checks are valid for a minimum of four years or, and or to coincide with, with the person's term of office. Uh, criminal background checks of appointed board members shall also coincide with the duration of their term of office. So that's the policy in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mr. So. And have you shared this particular document with um, Office of um, Legislative Council as the, as well as the Navajo Nation Department of Justice, the attorney that works with the Department of Ed- Education?
A- at this point, no, no, we haven't, but, but we can probably put this on a fast track if necessary, if needed.
Yes, I think it's very necessary. And um, last week, uh, Ms. Emily R. Viso highlighted a specific uh, section of twenty-five CFR. Committee members, I can't remember, was it thirteen oh seven, thirteen oh six? Maybe eight, yep, now. Somebody locate that one from Ms. Emily R. Viso.
Chair, this is Jordan at City with the Bose, but it's uh, part sixty-three point twelve.
Part sixty-three.
Point twelve.
Yes, um, Mr. Matthews So, uh, please, uh- Uh, please, uh, request for legal services with, uh, Department of Justice and then from, or and Ms. Loya Henderson.
Loya Henderson, okay.
Uh, Ms. Loya Henderson, are you on the call?
Yes, Chair, so I'm here.
Um, I had forwarded this, these particular documents from, uh, Ms. Emily Arviso.
Okay. I haven't received these documents to review, um, and just to let you know, I do have a meeting tomorrow also um, with the attorneys for the board. Um, so it would be helpful to review these documents before my meeting with them tomorrow.
Yes, I sent it this morning. I forwarded this morning to you and Ms. Bobroff at ten thirty this morning.
I resent them.
Okay, Ms. Angelique Benali just resent it.
Thank you so much.
So with that, um, there is also a, other documents, um, that, uh, Department of Indian Education has been harping on is, uh, to the data sharing agreement. That's another item, Mr. Matthews, so, um, these documents will also be forwarded to you so that you can also present it to, um, Superintendent, uh, Earl Bagay and Assistant Superintendent Moffett regarding the, um, possible enactment of the, or renewal of that, uh, data sharing agreement. Seems like it's been on the table since twenty nineteen and there's been no movement.
Okay, yeah, I, I can forward it on.
Thank you. Committee members, at this point in time, um, will just receive this as a report and wait for, um, direction from, um, Ms. Henderson and Ms. Bobroff as well as, uh, um, the attorney, uh, with, uh, Navajo Nation Department of Justice. Not then, Chair's open for motion to accept the report. Uh, motion by Honorable Edison Wanika. Second by Honorable Pernell Palona. Committee members, any further questions, comments? Not, um, perhaps could you, uh, like the roll call with Ramona? Was that you that's doing the?
Yes, Chairman So, I'm here. Okay, roll call vote on accepting the report. Honorable Paul Bagay, how do you vote? Honorable Paul Bagay, how do you vote? Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote?
Oh, I think that was Honorable Paul Bagay.
Thank you, Honorable Paul Bagay votes, Paul Bagay votes green. Honorable Carl Slater. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison Wanika.
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Edison Wanika votes green. Honorable Carl Slater. Honorable Charlene So. Chairman, we have three members voting in the affirmative or opposing, chairman not voting, and two members not voting. Chairman?
Thank you, Ramona. Thank you for doing the roll call. What you stated will be on the record as far as the will. Committee members, that takes us to new business, uh, part six, uh, A. Do we have Chair Charles Newton on the call?
Chair So, I am on the call.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, with that, uh, Ms. Angelique Benali, could you read the legislation into the record?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee, you have your legislation number zero, zero, two, three dash twenty-two. It is a proposed Navajo Nation Council Resolution, Twenty-Fourth Navajo Nation Council for year twenty-twenty-two, introduced by Council Delegate Eugene Charles, who is former sponsor, tracking number is zero, zero, two, three dash twenty-two. An act relating to Health Education and Human Services Law and Order and Navi Committee and the Navajo Nation Council, amending certain sections of the Navajo Nation code to transfer legislative oversight over veteran services. The, um, legislation or the, yeah, legislation has gone through the public, um, comment period. And also the comments from the public are attached. There the, um, potential letter from this other legislative council is included along with the, um, public comments as indicated. And, um, also attached where the reference is, um, CJ eight dash zero, two dash eighteen. And, uh, here.
Thank you. With that, committee members, do I hear a motion? Motion by Honorable Pernell Halona. Do I hear a second? Second by Honorable Edison Wanika. Committee members, do you have any questions, comment? Going once. Going twice. Question, Honorable Halona. Um, Madam Chair, Charles Newton, you have twenty minutes to present, um, the intent and purposes of this legislation.
Thank you, Chair So, and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. I do present this legislation at this time in hopes that the committee will vote on the matter, uh, issue forward. As you are aware and as we have been hearing, our veterans are running into several issues. Uh, and those issues are, um, they're either not being addressed or they are not being heard. Uh, there was a request, um, from veterans to have the oversight reassigned to Navi Kiatik because each and every single one of us delegates have veterans within our areas. Now granted, I know that Delegate Eugene So has also made the argument on the floor that every issue on Navajo does, um, affect all of our Navajo people. And as such, we should be privy to, um, to taking part in, in all of the meetings. However, uh, with veterans, uh, because of what has been transpiring these past few years and because of the, uh, split that currently is happening with veterans, these issues should be brought to the Twenty-Fourth Navajo Nation Council as a whole through a Navi Kiatik. Uh, and I know that with the new administration that the, that there's the possibility of changes occurring. Um, however, even with the most recent email that was sent to us, uh, this weekend, that was also the sentiment that was shared. I believe it was the Chinli Veterans Organization that stated, um, that their issues are not being addressed and they feel that Health Education and Human Services hasn't been addressing, uh, those issues as well. So I think that what, with the purpose of this legislation is to put the oversight, um, to Navi Kiatik so that we can ask questions that affect our veterans. In Northern Agency, I do attend, um, I have attended almost all, uh, every, every agency veterans organization, um, meeting. And I have also, um, attended the chapter veterans organization meetings. And it is during that time that we're hearing that there is, um, that there's little movement happening with some of the issues that they have brought forward. Uh, there's always a question of whether, um, Health Education and Human Services is receiving the comments, and I, I do see the comments and they are attached from Northern Agency. Um, however, I, I don't see, uh, the emails because I'm not on Health Education and Human Services. Um, we don't see any of the emails, um, of whether you guys receive them or not with the concerns that are attached. Uh, so again, the purpose of this legislation is to remove the veterans administration, the oversight from Health Education and Human Services and putting it under, um, Navi Kiatik. We have had several, uh, work sessions with veterans. We have heard the issues that are coming out from veterans. We have heard, um, what is not being done and also what has been done. Um, but I think that with this move, uh, we can let veterans know that we, we all are concerned about what is happening. Uh, we are, we are all concerned about, uh, the issues that they are bringing forward. And it gives every single one of us the opportunity to speak on the issue and to try to address, uh, the issue, you know, bringing all of our minds together. So that is the purpose of this legislation for, uh, with that, Chair So, I stand for questions.
Honorable Halona, you had a question?
Uh, good afternoon, uh, Mr. Charles Newton? You know, the question I had is, uh, uh, all the concerns that the veterans are, are raising, it doesn't seem like, uh, I think they need to get their house together in their own south too because there are different questions coming from different agencies and they're not all speaking together. How is that gonna, uh, work when you put it up before Navi? If that, the veterans themselves can't make an issue, uh, decide on the issue and what they want to have done. And, uh, um, when it comes to us, then we have to sort it out. That's what we've been dealing with, um. As far as the advisory committee is concerned, the way I understand it, advisory committee is only met like once or twice this year. And they haven't been able to get together, uh, to make suggestions for what they really need for the veterans administration. So from my point of view, uh, they need to get their house straight and organized before they can move forward to get anything else done with the, uh, Hess committee or even a Navi Kiatik because that's the way it's going to happen again, uh. They need to get together on the long, how, how do you propose this is gonna, uh, correct all of that, uh, Chair?
Thank you, Honorable Pernell Halona. Committee members, any other questions? Not then, uh, Madam Chair, Charles Newton?
Thank you, Chair So, and thank you, Delegate Halona, for that question. Um, so, you know, it, it's, I, I think that in a way you've kind of answered your own question uh, in that, um, the committee is well aware of the issues that are happening with the veterans. But council is not aware of all of the issues that are happening with veterans. So by putting the oversight as Navi Kiatik, it will allow council to hear what the issues are and to, to, uh, to be able to help to try to address what some of the issues are. We have had work sessions and during those work sessions, I feel like nothing really has been accomplished aside from, you know, the, it, it's been very clear that there is a split. Um, whether that split is an equal split, I think is still, it still remains, you know, that question still is unanswered because you have three agencies, uh, that are voting together and you have two that are not voting together. Uh, and so, you know, it makes it really difficult for us as a council to try to help with addressing the issues when we're not fully concerned of everything that is happening. Now, I understand that, you know, we do have these on, uh, the, that the veterans issues are always on the agenda for Health Education and Human Services are always posted. Uh, but, you know, some of us are, uh, chairing committees and we're not, um, able to participate at all times, uh, and we get to hear tidbits of what is happening. Um, but that information is not being conveyed. Um, and it's not being conveyed at the work session, it's not being conveyed when we have veterans legislation. And that's why I think that you have a clear split even at council when it comes to voting on matters regarding our veterans. Uh, making it clear across the board, um, that, you know, what the issues are. I, I think, you know, and, and giving us that opportunity to hear it uh, from the veterans and the agencies will allow us the opportunity again to put our heads together to try to figure out a way to address these issues. Our veteran issues have been, have been going on for, for quite some time. It hasn't just been this administration. Uh, it has been going on for quite some time with really little to no, um, you know, to, to no, um, uh, I, I don't want to say it hasn't been addressed because it has been heard, uh, but little to no, um, work that has been completed. Uh, we know that homes are not being built, but the money is there. Uh, we know that there was a push to try to get the policy changed to start making, you know, to start moving forward, but we're not seeing that. Uh, and so I think it's only fair that, you know, we represent a large portion of our, uh, people who are veterans, that we be privy to, to what is happening. And then also, um, you know, again, to, to come together, to have twenty-four delegates put their heads together to try to figure out what we could do to try to address this issue. Uh, and so for that reason, um, I think that, that pretty much, uh, answers the question as to why this needs to happen. Thank you.
Committee members, any further questions? Comments? Committee members, let me point you to, um, uh, the findings, uh, page two, section two, the resolution that the council adopted, CAP dash ten dash eleven. Um, at the time, uh, switching from eighty-eight members to twenty-four members. Um, they, the council at the time is the one that put the veterans program, veterans administration under the oversight of the Hess committee. But, uh, and we see, um, within that particular legislation, they also put one branch under one committee. Judiciary under Law and Order. Where in, at, at the same time, the executive offices of President and Vice President under the, uh, Navi Kiatik Committee. So there is, you know, um, I guess omissions or, uh, uh, just a failure of looking at the overall effect of that particular legislation. The other one is Navajo Nation Department of Justice being under one committee whereas, uh, that department defends the whole nation. And cases become an issue, so that is another. Cases become an issue, so that is another, is failing of that particular legislation in 2011. So, in this part where this legislation is correcting, since in the organization chart, the Navajo Nation Veterans Administration, the Navajo Nation Veterans Advisory Council exists within the office of the President and Vice President. The, there needs to be an argument to stop this move, as well as doing the other adjustments and the other aspects of correcting CAP-ten, eleven. So with that, committee members, if there's no further questions or comments, let's go to a vote. Ramona, could you?
Yes, Chairman So, roll call vote on approving the legislation. Honorable Paul Begay, how do you vote? Honorable Paul Begay, how do you vote? Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote? Honorable Edison Wanika, how do you vote? Honorable Edison Wanika, how do you vote? I'm sorry, I didn't get that, Mr. Wanika? Okay, thank you, Honorable Edison Wanika votes green. Honorable Paul Begay, how do you vote? Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote?
Red?
Thank you, Honorable Pernell Halona votes red. Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote? Chairman, we have one member voting in the affirmative, one opposing, chairman not voting, and three members not voting. Chairman?
Thank you. Could we do the roll call to see if we do have a quorum?
Chair Chairman, roll call for the Health Education and Human Services Committee. Honorable Paul Begay? Honorable Paul Begay? Honorable Pernell Halona? Thank you, Honorable Pernell Halona is present. Honorable Carl Slater? Honorable Carl Slater? Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Daniel So?
I'm here.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Daniel So is present. Honorable Edison Wanika? Thank you, Honorable Edison Wanika is present. Honorable Paul Begay? Honorable Carl Slater? Honorable Charlene So? Chairman, we have three members present upon roll call and three members not entering roll call. Chairman?
Thank you, Ramona. Committee members? I don't know if we had quorum when we made, when the chair accepted the motion and the second. Committee members? Angelita Nali, speak your advice on this particular matter. Committees, members usually text in to, to register their vote, and nobody has texted.
Chair members, update, Health Education Human Services Committee, I do show that there's a possibility of four members present. However, it might be that one person is experiencing technical difficulty, and not have, not having the technology, the clear technology to voice in their, or text in their vote. But I do show that there are four members. And, um, three of them answering roll call, and the one is, shows that they're on the Zoom call, that they're available, but they're not, they might have, might be experiencing some technical difficulties, not being able to communicate in.
Committee members, somebody texts the balance of the committee to, we're seeking answer to the roll call, seeking quorum. We did have quorums when we addressed the vast report. When we accepted the report from Navajo Nation Department of Education. Chair So? Paul Begay, you're on the call?
Yes, I'm back on the call. Just going over the summit, and just, uh, five kinds of issues. Back on call.
Pull over, so you can stay on the call. Okay, Ramona, let's do roll call again, one more time, to establish quorum.
Yes, Chairman So, roll call for the Health Education and Human Services Committee. Honorable Paul Begay?
Chairman Gepagay is present.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Paul Begay is present. Honorable Pernell Halona?
Halona is present.
Thank you, Honorable Pernell Halona is present. Honorable Carl Slater? Honorable Carl Slater? Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Daniel So?
I'm here.
Thank you, Honorable Daniel So is present. Honorable Edison Wanika?
I'm here.
Thank you, Honorable Edison Wanika is present. Chairman, we have four members present upon roll call and two members not entering roll call. Chairman?
Okay, thank you, Ramona. Uh, committee members, you have a motion and a sec, second to adopt legislation zero zero two three dash twenty-two. The main intent is to relinquish our oversight authorities on Navajo Nation of Veteran Services to the NABE KIA Committee. So, Ramona, roll call, vote on that legislation.
Yes, Chairman So, roll call vote on the legislation. Honorable Paul Begay, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote?
Red.
Thank you, Honorable Pernell Halona votes red. Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Edison Wanika, how do you vote?
Please.
Thank you, Honorable Edison Wanika votes green. Chairman, we have three members voting in the affirmative, one opposing, chairman not voting, and two members not voting. Chairman?
Thank you. Two in favor, one opposed, and chair not voting. This legislation moves on to the Law and Order Committee, and subsequently to the NABE KIA Committee. So let's go move on to New Business B, legislation zero two two zero dash two two.
Thank you, Health Education Human Services.
Mr. Chair, members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee, you have your legislation that's B. It is the Post Standing Committee Resolution Twenty-Fourth Navajo Nation Council, fourth year twenty-two, introduced by council delegate Pernell Halona as primary sponsor, tracking number is zero two two zero dash twenty-two. An action relating to Health Education, Human Services, and NABE KIA Committees approving and supporting the Navajo Nation Division of Social Services written comments to the New Mexico Human Services Department draft Medicaid one thousand one hundred and fifteen demonstration waiver renewal application. The legislation does move on to the NABE KIA Committee, and the exhibit A is attached to the legislation, along with the transmittal letter to the sponsors, and the comment period has been yet, if I say comment, public comment period has been met, and no comments were received, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Benali, committee members, do I hear a motion? Honorable Pernell Halona, do you have an agent on the call?
I should have an agent. Mr. Paul Begay, are you online?
This one's with the Social Services, um... Do we have, Ms. Deanna Neswadgishi? Assistant Director, Ms. Littman, are you on the call? Mr. Halona, Honorable Pernell Halona?
Yes, sir.
Do you wish to proceed?
No.
You withdrawing your legislation?
I have to make a motion to withdraw the legislation.
You don't, no, um, what you will need to do is, if you're withdrawing, file the appropriate documents with the chair and advisor, once you say you withdraw the legislation. Um, in withdrawing the legislation, you would need to file the proper document. There's a yellow or form in the council delegate's office that states that you are withdrawing the legislation. Once you file it with the chair and legislative advisor, then you'll proceed. While you're getting that document, you'll go on to the next document.
Officer Chair, I'll go ahead and pick that up, pick that up. Thank you.
Okay. With that, let's go on to legislation zero two 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 dash twenty-two. Uh, Ms. Benali?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the, um, what's the question? Six C is the, uh, the Post Standing Committee Resolution Twenty-Fourth Navajo Nation Council, uh, fourth year twenty-two, introduced by council delegate Edison J. Winika as primary sponsor, tracking number is zero two 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 dash twenty-two. An action relating to the Health Education, Human Services, and NABE KIA Committees approving and supporting the Navajo Department of Health written comments to the US Department of Health and Human Services Annual Regional Tribal Consultation. The legislation does move on to the NABE KIA Committee, annual authority, and you have your exhibits which are attached to the, um, AFSK is attached to the legislation, along with, um, the review, the one sixty-eight review with the executive branch, and you have their comments which are attached that's completed the executive branch review. Also, you have your transmittal letter from the Office of the State of Council to the sponsor, and the legislation has met the five-day comment, or public comment review, and no comments were received, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Committee members, what are the wishes of the committee?
Motion, Adel Gepagay?
Oh, that's a change. Motion by Honorable Paul Begay. Do I hear a second? Thank you. Committee members, any questions? Do the sponsor or agent? Going once? Going twice? Three times? Ramona, please provide the roll call vote for this legislation.
Yes, Chairman So, I did not get the second on that, approving the, approving the legislation on zero two 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 dash twenty-two, the, my internet wasn't stable.
Yes, Honorable Pernell Halona made the second on the motion.
Okay, thank you, Honorable So. Okay, roll call vote on approving the legislation. Honorable Paul Begay, how do you vote?
Honorable Paul Begay votes green.
Thank you, Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Pernell- Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Thank you, Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote? Honorable Edison Winika, how do you vote? Thank you, Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Chairman, we have three members voting in the affirmative, zero opposing, chairman not voting, and two members not voting. Chairman?
Thank you, Ms. Ramona. Thank you, uh, committee members. This, uh, legislation, uh, will become part of the, uh, comments on the tribal consultation. Thank you. Uh, that takes us to item six D, legislation zero two two three dash twenty-two. Ms., uh, Angelita Benali, please read the proposed, uh, legislation into the record.
Mr. Chair, Council Education and Human Services Committee, you have your, um, six D. That's legislation number zero two two three dash twenty-two. It's proposed Navajo Nation Council.
First, we gave you guys your letters.
Introduced by council delegate Edison J. Winika as primary sponsor. Tracking number is zero two two three dash twenty-two. An action relating to the Health Education, Human Services, and N'vukia Kit Committees and the Navajo Nation Council approving the reinstatement of Hallie A. Lizer as a member of Navajo Nation. The, uh, document, uh, the legislation does move on to the N'vukia Kit Committee and then the Navajo. There's an exhibit A on the le- with the legislation along with an exhibit B. And there's a, uh, let's put in council transmit a letter to primary sponsor along with, uh, documentation that legislation has gone through the five day period and no.
Thank you, committee members. Chair is open for a motion to adopt the proposed, uh, legislation. Motion by Honorable Pernell. Second by Honorable Paul Begay. Committee members, any questions? Going once? Going twice?
Chair, Delegate Begay?
Yes.
Yes, uh, perhaps, uh, just an introduction of the, of Lizer? If she's available, they could.
Thank you. Uh, Honorable Edison Winika. And members of the committee, um, hoping that she's online because I heard that she wrote, uh, part of the attachment. I will give her a call but, uh, it didn't state for, uh, and that was part of it, but it's no longer there. Just a number and that's how I was able to get a hold for that time. So, uh, Ms. Lizer, are you on the line? Ms. Lizer, are you on the call? Okay, she's not on the call? You would just wish to go ahead and send this document on to the N'vukia Kit Committee?
Here, So, um, pardon my interruption, may I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, thank you. I just reviewed the document and there needs to be a, um, edit done, um, for page two on line, um, sixteen. Um, I have this amendment ready to go if someone would sponsor it. It is just changing the name, um, in the reinstatement. It doesn't state Hallie and Lizer, it states Shandee Deputy, and so that needs to be, um, changed. And I will send that amendment if someone can sponsor it.
Page two, line?
Sixteen, section three.
Um, the one I have says Hallie, uh, oh, okay. At the heading, committee members?
Yes.
Section in capital bold letters. Okay. Chair is open for a motion to amend. Honorable Pernell Halona. I'd like to go ahead and make that motion to amend to change it for that, uh, second three, uh, what's her name? Deputy. Committee, do I hear a second?
Delegate Paul Begay.
Okay. All right, thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Delegate Begay seconds, I recognize that second. Um, the motion to amend the legislation. Ms. Ramona, please provide the roll call. Thank you, Ms. Henderson, thank you for catching that. Ms. Ramona?
Yes, Chairman So, roll call vote on approving the, oh, I'm sorry, the amendment. Honorable Paul Begay, how do you vote?
Delegate Paul Begay, it's green.
Thank you, Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote?
Halona votes green.
Thank you, Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote? Honorable Edison Winika, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Chairman, we have three members voting in the affirmative, zero opposing, chairman not voting, and two members not voting. Chairman?
Thank you, Ms. Ramona. This legislation moves on to the N'vukia Kit Committee. That completes our slate, our legislations. We move on to item seven, old business, there being none. And then we go to close of meeting. There are no announcements. I'd like for the committee to act on, um, three items. One, to request for off reservation travel to Cuba, New Mexico on November twenty-ninth. Meet the Cuba in the defendant's school district, uh, student body. The presentation will be, um, acquisition, usage, retention of the Navajo language starting at nine AM. And hope to be done by one PM. Next item would be the, um, strategy, leadership strategy meeting with the Navajo Nation Board of Education and the Health Education, Human Services Committee. The location will be the Hono Chamber of Commerce in Albuquerque for December second, third. And then it also to attend the, um, public hearing regarding the Gallup Indian Medical Center. Public hearing is being conducted by the Health and Human Services Department of the United States Government as well as the Indian Health Service. Miss, uh, National IHS Director, Ms. Roseland So would be presenting. That would be December second, I mean sixth, excuse me. And of course, we can still look at the, we will still conduct the regular meeting of the Hess Committee on November thirtieth. Ayla, if I could have a motion? Make it official.
Hey, motion, Delegate Paul Begay.
Pushing, um, I'll accept Honorable Paul Begay's motion, second by Honorable Winika. That, Ramona, Ms. Ramona, please, uh, provide the roll call.
Yes, Chairman So, roll call for approving the requests. Honorable Paul Begay, how do you vote?
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Thank you, Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable, uh, Pernell Halona, how do you vote?
Halona votes green.
Thank you, Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote? Honorable Edison Winika, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Chairman, we have three members voting in the affirmative, zero opposing, chairman not voting, and two members not voting. Chairman?
Thank you. Committee members, thank you for approving, um, these, uh, off reservation travel, uh, requests. Um, with that, uh, committee members, so we've pretty much put together a, or, or schedule for the next two weeks. Uh, again, this meeting is, uh, was, uh, moved from November twenty-third, a regular meeting, to the twenty-first to accommodate the committee and, uh, hopefully the staff to have a day of family time. With that, I appreciate your, um, participation in opening the call and thank you again. Thank you, Ms. Loyah Henderson for, um, giving us guidance as well. And there are some new assignments and, you know, the paperwork for, um, your work is piled high. So we appreciate your attention. Now, there's a special request from Department of Health, uh, so tell the Honorable, um, Edison Winika, that, uh, request for legislation, did you sign it? Now, we had, uh, a notice that the legislation was ready for, um, pickup. You sign on, I'll. And I don't have any other notices. Think there's any other special meetings. I know that Honorable Carl Slater is tied up with Resource and Development Committee regarding the outdoor recreation funding. But, uh, committee members, so motion to adjourn?
Motion, Delegate Begay.
Oh, motion, okay. It could be, uh, Honorable Halona's, uh, motion. So I recognize the motion by Honorable Paul Begay.
Second, Halona.
Okay, I recognize the second, uh, motion to adjourn offers no comment or, um, or debate. Ms. Ramona, please, uh, provide the roll call vote.
Yes, Chairman So, roll call vote on adjoning the meeting. Honorable Paul Begay, how do you vote?
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Thank you, Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Thank you, Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote? Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Ca- uh, Carl Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Edison Winika, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Chairman, we have three members voting in the affirmative. Chairman not voting and two mem- zero opposing and two members not voting. Chairman?
Thank you, Ms. Ramona. So in, in that aspect, the committee is adjourned. All on the call, take care of yourselves, nice travels, and enjoy the holidays that are coming up. Be back afterwards.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays.